That's why I don't quite heard what you said.
Pardon me.
Sorry.
You can still talk. We're still human.
I didn't want to be like, ooh, you know.
Then they would know.
But I am very proud.
Then they would know. Yeah, awesome.
But look.
Good start tonight.
He would get, um, so he would get flown out to wherever they do the photo shoot for the, um, the brand. And then he would get two pictures in his photo shoot. So basically they're paying him to do an advertising, but I don't care.
Hey, that's what they should be doing anyway.
I mean, let's go.
Well, he's got my vote, mama.
That would be cool. Look at the picture I posted. Look. That might be what got their attention. You think? Yeah.
Hey.
Awesome. Okay. That might be what got their attention. I don't know if your name was on this, also.
Good to speak over here now. Oh, thank you. I might need that. I need to sneak up there again.
You're Kim Kozak, right? You're on that list, too. There's six of these for Perini on the list, which is you, right? Your jersey. Okay. Just making sure. Sign harassing people, is that what we're saying? Apparently we're part of some sign.
When do we get paid?
But it's not pretty sure. No, yeah, pretty sure we're using a good law for harassment. And then names. Do you know who Jeff Walter is? Where did you get this? It was submitted to someone on the way. It was given in a FOIA? Yeah. It was given in a FOIA and the person that put in that FOIA contacted me. Oh, hell yeah. Many of the Shide tribe are on his mail route? Yeah. So he can campaign while working? Oh, I didn't even look at the other name, sorry. I just saw mine. Yeah, who's Caleb Worley? I'm one of the parents. I know I've seen the name before, but I don't know who it is. So Caleb Worley. So it's, it's you, Melissa, Scott, Kim Kozak? Yes. Matt Underwood? Which I know Matt. Eric Olaskas. I don't know who Caleb Worley is. I know you. And I only know you because you're spoken to. I assume that that's supposed to be Denise Perini, not Denise Perini. De Nice? I didn't catch that one. Um, and I don't know who Jeff Walt- Walter is. And then he says, I'm sure I forgot a few names.
You have my call, the meeting in order for a brief roll.
Mayor Hollenbeck?
Here. Here.
Small, here, Shide?
Here.
Buckingham?
Here. Call family, but the people please. But the agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You would like to adjourn, you would like to accompany email July 2nd, 2025, approved, and do some final dispensary reading of it.
Do I have a second?
One second. Um, I have two concerns. Uh, number one is Mayor Hollenbeck could bear to act of the meeting under the imprimatur of the city. Gives a recap of what happened without my ability to respond via that city funded avenue, even though I have concerned applications. My second concern is, do we approve the minutes before they are posted? And are we obligated to do so? And that is, that I guess is a question for Attorney Hamlin. Are we allowed to, under the Open Meetings Act, post the minutes prior to having approval?
You are.
Okay, very good. Now, on one, on two separate occasions, we've amended the minutes.
Correct.
Prior, and then those amendments were not posted on the door the way the unamended minutes were.
Correct, because they were amended at the meeting. If you'll recall, I believe my memory serves me, we made that amendment at the meeting, which is allowed, uh, under the rules to make an amendment to minutes. You are correct.
Um, I'm very sorry, Attorney Hamlin, uh, a mayor, please, I'm asking a very, I'm asking a question of good conscience and I'm listening to response. Thank you, Attorney Hamlin.
So it would be impossible to post an amendment that was done on the door because we have a posting requirement of 48 hours in advance after the meeting. Make sure, you know, that there was anybody who wanted, didn't have their mandate, so put it, get the, then sit in hall and get them, wanted to post them on the door, you certainly do that.
Okay. And then again, and that might, that might issue with the imprimatur of the city that Mayor Hollenbeck posted recap, which has mentioned me by name, which has mentioned me as the reason for the issues with personnelless buyer documentation. Um, is that, in your opinion, viewpoint discrimination?
Well, I'm not sure what viewpoint discrimination means. I don't have Facebook, so I'm not familiar with, I know you folks have referenced this social media, uh, sites and I'm not sure what this group cap is, if it's, you know, uh, him on the radio or if it's a website posting. So until I would have a chance to review whatever that, that is, um, you know, mayors have the ability to communicate just what he probably does on the radio. I don't know if that's where the statement of the media, media post was. I don't do Facebook, and so I don't, um, have, have knowledge of, of what that.
So there's, yeah, so there, there, there's three issues. There's a new flyer on maybe imprimatur of the city of Marcellus. There's the Facebook post that has been done as City of Marcellus. Uh, even shared as Marcellus Mayor Chapada under his title, and then shared by City of Marcellus and under radio. So I'm, I'm glad you're aware of that now. I'm sorry I didn't know before, and thank you very much, sir. And I appreciate the counseling before Mayor had signed that letter. And thank you, Mayor.
For brief roll.
Commissioner Mcinski?
Hi.
Small? Shide?
Yep.
Buckingham? Mayor Hollenbeck?
Hi. Before we get into the public comments section, counseling the past has been very tolerant in the, um, public comments on the third, since that's about meeting from KIAD. Past meeting, I reviewed, it's difficult on feedback, people that believe, um, I'm not sure why it's that difficult, people that go by the rules and file their every rule, policy, policy. Personal tax not tolerated, persons in the audiences not be tolerated. You're going to get one warning, second time, I will have Chief Gordon or Captain Bunkham in this court, yeah. You have to maintain control of this and keep shut. There's a timer on the west wall. The timer goes off, please cease and take your seat. We give you five minutes to speak. There's no provision for anyone to give an extra time by any. If there's more than one person to speak on the same topic, please pick a spokesman. Counsel will be in the middle of taking both interruptions from the audience, not tolerated. This is important, and I have attended several public meetings. I've got an issue with a hospital, and I would say two, three hundred people in attendance, but every single one of them behaved themselves out of personal anger, the personal attacks, you know, he can do better. Anybody wish to address?
I'm just quick and simple. I'll be the first one to speak in the new building. I just want to say, thank you to everybody. You guys did a great job in the building. It's good for me, it feels good to come back in here and walk through a place I've worked at for over ten years. I love this city body, I love that city kept it going, made something amazing. We can be here for the rest of my life and hope for the rest of our kids' lives, enjoying this wonderful building. Even though I don't, I don't agree with everything that you had to offer the time, I don't, but most part though I do. And I appreciate what you do and the efforts that you all have put into the job that you have. You just thank us, you have seen that, we all see that, but I appreciate it. I think that you have more supporters than you think you do. So keep up the great work, all of you guys. Great job. Thank you very much.
First, I got a couple of questions. Um, one is for the city court. I am curious when you listed your. Is this on her?
You're wasting time because you're using your time.
Yeah. Lots of bits of public comment section, we're not on the stage, questions by the fourth, you got questions?
Okay, well, my comments, I'm concerned about a FOIA that I received. There's a couple of things I'm concerned about. One FOIA was regarding the Facebook page that I received screenshots today from the city court of someone writing on a law specifically that states Mayor Hollenbeck sucks dick. And the mayor sucks dick for commission. How is that in any way to do with a Facebook FOIA? Like, I am very confused about this. I am very offended that this was evened, because this has nothing to do with. Um, second, I was provided an email that someone else received via FOIA, um, that names me and several others, and I, I do know some of the people just by name. Let's see, Melissa Pointer Tooley, Scott, Kim Kozak, Matt Underwood, Eric, I can't pronounce his last name, Caleb Worley, who I have no idea who it is, Denise Perini, Jeff Walter, and then I'm sure I forgot a few names. We're being called Shide tribe, which I find very offensive. Now, Commissioner, Commissioner Shide and I have become friends over the last year, um, but I don't always agree with everyone, just says, specifically last, last council meeting, there was a vote about when public comments would be. And Commissioner Small, I listened to what you said and I agreed with you. It gives you, us speaking before you guys take a vote, gives us a chance to change your mind. And I believe I brought it to you that I disagree with your vote on this. You know, it's like, I'm not here just to be invited by any of the commissioners, and there are other reasons other than that. But I also want to bring up, um, something else that was in this email. It states, the dumbest person on this earth can see connections. I have proof of Shide talking on the phone to Melissa Tooley and calling for posts on forums, information regarding the water that had absolutely nothing to do with our water investing procedures. Mayor Hollenbeck, can I, um, ask you what this proof is of my private phone call with Commissioner Shide apparently? Like, is this a recording you have? Very quiet. Okay, well, there's something. Then we can discuss this at a later date, but I'm also going to be discussing it with Chief Gordon because I believe recording private phone calls is a class four felony, and I would like to file a formal complaint against the mayor for this. Well, if you're listening in on my private phone call, you committed a crime, and I will have you charged for it. Can I speak to the meeting regarding this?
What's that, where's, where's that? The wall that's winding down is.
You want me to wait?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I think I'm going to use all my time. I guess I could still continue talking if I chose to. Forty-one seconds. I'll try to use all my time so you don't have to do that again. I said it would be short and sweet. Okay, I'll see you in a bit. I yield the rest of my time to you. No.
This is what I did.
Okay, um, so first I am wondering if, um, we have any info for those district bobbies that I was looking into at the last meeting. I still have not met any, so I am looking for info for the district, um, covering the last, if we could, two years. Um, specifically the district that used to exist for this property. Um, second, I would like to suppose that there be a point increase for the commissioners as well as the mayoral position. I believe the five thousand a year allotted for commissioners and the ten thousand a year allotted for, uh, for the mayor are outdated amounts. I believe, it is believed that they have been put in place in 2015 or 2016. Um, and I believe that that's important, especially when considering factors such as the responsibility that you all have, the standards that you guys are expected to be held to, um, the amount of times about dealing with city issues, the pure stress of it all, inflation, et cetera. Five and ten thousand a year respectively is not enough to account for all factors involved. Um, and I believe that, um, it would be you, Bobby, and Finance Commissioner that would have to propose that on an agenda. Um, but I believe that raises our due, um, and overdue has been over ten, about ten years since that's been looked at, so. Um, next, I would like to know if the tax grant status, um, has been completed, and I'm asking, uh, it is filed. Okay, and how long will it be before we know we're getting money back or if that is paid?
Uh, that has to be processed. I must, uh, supervise how long that is going to be paid, uh, a specific timeframe, but she said hopefully.
Okay. Okay, and we'll hear tonight if that is paid. Um, I have the donation, or have it, I know the donation, some access hasn't been returned, because I just went over there and looked. Um, so I'm trying to figure out how we get that handled, because again, it is a First Amendment issue. I'm not joking. This is a First Amendment issue. Um, I, like, y'all have two weeks to look into it. It's a First Amendment issue, two to throw back. And allow, allow other donations on city property as well, because that would be a First Amendment violation as well. Um, I know when I was just seeing this, um, the thing that Melissa was referring to, but my issue with it is that you're saying that, um, that it's unfortunate that they are using a good law for harassment, and I would like to know where I harass anybody by requesting a FOIA. Mine are typically like spot on, I know exactly what I'm looking for, I'm succinct and to the point. I have not harassed anybody with a FOIA. I have put about four or five of them in. Um, mine are typically like one-page responses, to be honest with you. And I'm being called as harassing, and my name is in this. I need to tell you wrong, but I, I'm the only Denise, Denise Perini in Marcellus, so I assume you're referring to me, and I have a massive issue with that. Um, yes, he's my only man, sure is. And today I stopped him on his route, he did not stop me, and I said, hey, I just want to let you know, I'm bringing up a couple things in the meeting tonight, and he's like, okay, do your thing, like, no response other than, okay, do your thing. But, um. Um, but my FOIA has not been a harassment meter, and if they have, I'd like to see proof of that, just like you are defaming me, since you like to sue people for defamation. I'm gone.
You have anybody else? You need to talk longer, isn't it?
Oh, do you want me to go again? I'm going to yield your time to. Actually, I do have a few seconds. Okay, um, please don't do a single holler. Um, the garbage issue is garbage, they are union, let them work their stuff out. We still have a choice. Please leave it as a choice. Yes, that's all.
Want to go ahead and stand up there, ma'am, and not be upset?
Just speak up.
Ma'am, before we start, just make your name.
Yeah, don't remember me. Forgot, do I already? I'm Kathy McMickens. M C, M I C, K E N S. Okay, so I'm here tonight, um, to speak about a post on the mayor's Facebook page, and the post says, it doesn't matter how many Sundays you stay in church, God sees what you do and how the tree you build, and that is what really matters. Um, and then someone sent me a picture of the mayor sent, uh, taking a selfie in the middle of church. Uh, I'm a Christian, and the behavior exhibited by the current mayor in Marcellus does not reflect the teachings of my Christ in any shape or form, and I found the picture in the post offensive. Uh, the trans.
What are my reasons about personal?
It's not a personal attack, I'm just making a public comment about a public post.
Personal attack.
It's not personal, it's not personal.
Well, that point of work, I think that's what you're doing, and I'll get you straight, rude and profound.
I'm talking about my feelings. Okay, um, I'm not going to get into your transgressions in general. The Facebook page the mayor claims is not an official page has all the markings of a city page, claiming it doesn't change the public procession, perception that it is an official page. It states the public figure, the address to the current city hall is listed publicly, his city email address is listed publicly, it even has our C hall is open on it, it has the city website listed. This is plain and simply a city Facebook page and blocking individuals from seeing what is posted is childish and only an attempt to hide it, uh, to cover up your issues, mayor. If it's not a city Facebook page, put mayor as your employment status, list your personal address in the email, and remove the city website. Then it'll be a personal Facebook page. Until then, it's viewed as a city page, and the posts on there reflect on the city good or bad. Taking selfies in churches of Pauline is just another of your mistakes as a Christian. As a Christian, it's important to have discernment, know right from wrong, truth from untruth and good from evil. In Antioch, Paul confronted Peter. Even the apostles were only human and could make mistakes. Peter was not following the teachings of Christ, and even Barnabas went along with Peter. Those are counsel should easily, should really consider their alignment and their actions. Galatians 2:13, as a result, other Jewish believers followed Peter's hypocrisy, and even Barnabas was led astray by their hypocrisy. When we can expect those that oppose wrong doing are going to be targeted in the lines, but remember 1 Peter 2:15. It is God's will that your honorable lives should silence those ignorant people who make foolish accusations against you. Romans 8:12 and 4 through 14, therefore, dear brothers and sisters, you have no obligation to do what your sinful nature urges you to do, or if you live, but as dictates you will die. But if through the power of the Holy Spirit you put to them the deeds of your sinful nature, you'll live. For all who are led by the spirit of God are children of God. We must be watchful of wolves in sheep's clothe, Matthew 7:15 and 6 through 16. Beware of false prophets who come disguised as harmless sheep, but are really vicious wolves. And I would say that anyone on counsel, though it's not a personal attack, would have respect of the community, would stand up, admit your wrongdoings, ask forgiveness from those you bullied, threatened, harassed, and tried to silence, then if you continue the path that you're on, it will only end poorly with your reputation ruined. No one can ruin a reputation but you. All of you know what you've done or not done that have hurt the city, you claim to love, and the people you claim to serve, and all of you will answer it for some day. Please be mindful of what you're putting on a public page, claiming to represent Christ. You're under public scrutiny, and selfies in church are just not in good judgment. We're in Congress, people.
So, uh, we have a city bond with dispatch contract, which also covered per, uh, per section, that's a hundred and eight thousand share for dispatch. Evergreen Nixle, 360, forty-one hundred dollars. Uh, the only EPA agency for NDS, DAS permits for waste water treatment plant, one one thousand five hundred. Catmull firm, thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars cents. Shide Duckner, uh, thirteen thousand one hundred eighty-one. Redditch, Redditch Associates. Thirty-four thousand fifty-five. Porcellia Lobby Consulting, four thousand. Nobody Power Marketing, which is our luxury for the whole city, twenty thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars six cents. Okay, so are we at, like, ballpark, two point eight, three, two point four million on building purchase renovation? Could that be like in the neighborhood? I have to give you accurate number, Mike, so. Okay, and then, and then about one point four five, one point five on the mark? Yes. Okay. Thank you. For brief roll. Hi.
Shide?
Yep.
Buckingham? Mayor Hollenbeck? Will I press your statement to the panel of Kozak to lend one hundred thousand, second, forty-five dollars and nineteen cents to the one we got in the city court.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Uh, let's see, so I have a payroll with, uh, full, full swing, of course, we're. Of course, we have some workers in, uh, pretty scared. Police department's not bad in overtime, trade department, no big water breaks, so.
You did it.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Hi.
Mall?
Hi.
Good.
Stay in.
Senior?
Hi.
Mayor Hall?
Hi. Number three.
Will I, Mr. Kaminsky, that the ordinance 1888 and appropriation ordinance of this year, 2025, 2026, we want?
Well, I'm sorry. The place is on file at the last meeting, but needed to review, like?
So appropriations that are here, affect the best of city budget, so they give us room on every line item. Just, uh, a major water break, so let's say we got a place of company on water towers, the Asian race department's budget for this 300,000. This gives us room that we could, uh, take money off of, not many of the original budget, but, so. This is our safe, uh, our safety bracket, they don't trust. If there's any major issues that are above and beyond our budget.
Okay, per week rule?
Mr. Kaminsky?
Hi.
Mall?
Hi.
Shai?
No.
Buckingham?
Hi.
Mayor Hall?
Hi. Number four.
Will I, Mr. Kaminsky, the payments of things, the only $4,048 to the city hall, police department, and model of your roots?
Well, I'm sorry. Yes, any discussion?
So this is, uh, some of the forms that they had to fix and stuff that was, uh, as they're doing support here, to get that correct, so. It's on the accounts payable, and some, which wants to update it, so.
Per week rule?
Mr. Kaminsky?
Hi.
Mall?
Hi.
Shai?
Hi.
Buckingham?
Hi.
Mayor Hall?
Hi. Need to, you know?
No, it's a very big, you should, well.
Um, I just wanted to remind everybody that our meeting is, if I say two for you, on July 19th, from 10:00 p.m. Last day register is 16th, might work at the slots for that, so. Uh, twelve to do, that's... Excuse me, um, I also just really wanted to segue from something Grady said about the donation boxes. Um, I know that it was at discretion of corporate council. I, not corporate council, however, just from my limited research on such things, I'm not sure by the shit boxes and gorgeous, well, just, well, donations, like, are indeed, um, accepted by the city. On, that said, as far as the governmental agreement between the city of Ottawa and Marcellus for our dispatch contract, uh, Captain Buckingham, we're hand in hand with me on this to renegotiate our contract with the city of Ottawa. Also, we're able, at one point, we have our fire protection districts, and ours all, uh, is a conglomerate on one bill, and, uh, we were able to get those separated, so. Moving forward, we're moving our contract, uh, for, um, almost 190,000 minus 25,000. Part of it was contributing towards that, uh, down to, um, 180,000, so. At, uh, taking account of percentage rises over the next three years, uh, we're almost cutting that in half for the dispatch contract. Um, renegotiating, and separating. Um, I also just wanted to remind people to be respectful of equipment out of our, I appreciate those who have, um, slowed down while they're driving on Broadway Street, but would like to encourage any other, um, motorists who are now taking streets other than Broadway Street, please follow the same lead, please be mindful of, uh, our residents, and traffic, those, uh, other, just like, everybody who's working, she's, they've done, they've done. And, oh.
Yep, what was that?
Sorry.
Will I, Mr. Small, with special appointment for Midwest O.C.R., September 25th, 2025?
Well, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
This is, uh, low, stupid. Someone gave them?
Yeah. So, um, it's a ten day, they will run or walk five days, or ten days, and every two, five, through that, or so. That should be fun time, oh, and, I also, I probably did, uh, our show, speaking as well, um, the fires, it's doing. Um, our show, it's always, so, so, please come down and support, amazing people.
Well, what's it gonna be, this is 27? Uh, like, September 27th, the plus year.
That's a seven.
I was fine.
Okay, if you're gonna be Sunday, I wanna challenge you guys to do it, Saturday, so the Leonard's gotta notify. Maybe, what, what's it, so, Saturday, Saturday? Busy for weeks.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Hi.
Mall?
Hi.
Shai?
Hi.
Buckingham?
Hi.
Mayor Hall?
Hi. Ready?
Will I, all of, kind of, the, 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 for communication services, uh, you have.
So, I'll second that. We got discussion.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Hi.
Mall? Shai?
Hi.
Buckingham?
Hi. Uh.
Um, just, um, please stay safe, warm, the weather's, uh, next week, or school.
They say?
Not warm, it's quite a bit warm. Well, uh, I know next week they're on, uh, 120, when, so, be mindful of, uh, the neighbors and if you're on the, uh, when, when the time comes, there will be, which was about, in centers, uh, of, uh, help.
Mr. Kaminsky? Uh, thank you, um, first of all, point of agreement, uh, two points of agreement with, uh, with Mr. Small. One is, I definitely would like to see donation boxes. I, I don't see the harm in it, uh, as long as everyone's treated equally. I just wanted to agree with that. Um, also, with going around, uh, you know, one of the reasons why I closed the park was, it was on a busy street, and separated by that busy street. Now, one thing we've done to ameliorate that have been this, I've heard, speed bumps, and I appreciate everybody's patience with that. But one of the consequences of that is that Wallace Street, not Illinois, because Illinois kind of has natural speed bumps, but Wallace Street, it's, uh, have some, uh, I have really become kind of speedways, uh, sadly. And I understand that we probably can't unilaterally make toll in a one-way, but I would like the councils blasting on going to Idaho and asking for it to become a one-way, in particular, kids coming off the pedestrian bridge, uh, there, there's a real, uh, there's real opportunity for further learning. Um, the second thing I want to mention is that, um, on, again, through, through, through channels that at least have the cities seal speak asset that's on behalf of the city. Uh, there have been significant statements made against the FOIA requests. And, or at least speaking of them, as if they're under some extensive, uh, a level of trouble to the city. Um, the first document that led to these FOIA requests, not just from the resident, but from the Ottawa Times, was one that I had asked to be investigated. I've asked it several times, that release of that document to be investigated, and that has not been done. And I would ask that if you're going to say that FOIA requests are cumbersome, that you have the decency to hold an investigation to see, how can this all get started? Because I, and by the way, I'm very happy to say, Polygraph, I would ask others to do one, but. I think that, um, saying that FOIA requests are problematic, and then refusing to do an investigation as to how the one document got released in the first place, is inconsistent, um, and I feel it's extraordinarily unfair. Uh, also, we should have a bias towards transparency. When I became an elected official, I signed up for the fact that people can look at it. People can see me picking my nose and trap, people can see me saying something dumb. Uh, that's, uh, that's something that I think we have to, would just accept as part of our jobs, is that we're under the public eye. And so, uh, with that, um, we are gonna be, I'm trying to convince Michael, is that correct?
Yes, right, I have proof.
Yeah, and if we can do a motion for the council's blessing on the toll in the one-way? I certainly, I wouldn't have a motion of that, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, don't answer.
Very good, yeah, I know the contact, I, uh, as far as, like, to what I said, we need their blessing before we do an emergency.
It's pretty brutal. Smart move.
Smart move, yeah, not to say, oh. Well, however, we could not change the speed limit because of, I, of, I, you know, consideration, sure. And so therefore, the one-way might have similar provisions, yes.
One way going east or west?
Well, I mean, the thing is, until I realized that the council was either forward or against it, that question is sadly moved. If you're not foregoing into one-way, it doesn't matter which way it's going, we're not doing it. Uh, however, might not make sense, no, hopefully, yeah, so, uh, effectively, um, one-way from Broadway and ending at the wall. So effectively, it would be a one-way traveling west. I mean, first north and then west, but. And so again, it is my desire to contact the Illinois Department of Transportation to see if I do need a blessing before we do it, but I wanted to bring it up at this meeting, and again, just because one of the consequences of our part is that people have become, have had to gone driving very quickly, uh, to, uh, alternate roads, uh, with that. Again, not so much Illinois, and like to sort of get shot, when speeding on Illinois Street by a side of the other.
We made that one way approach.
Oh, I, I, I think the service of the moon will probably keep them from that. I just, I'll tell you, when my pulse was dropped, I cannot get more than 10 miles an hour in Illinois. I, I feel pretty good about that, however, I mean, truly, um, it's, uh, what, I would love to have that problem, about the reception, Mr. Bucking. I would love to have the problem with people driving too fast in Illinois, because I didn't do so safe. Now, as, as, as far as Wallace is concerned, I think that it is possible that it would exacerbate the current issues with Wallace. I might ask Public Health and Safety to get closer, if that happens to Wallace, I would like to thank them for their attention, please.
I just, I just thought with the captain and people that have eighty complaints, many speaks for speeders.
Oh, okay, plus seven. Yeah, perfect, yeah, so, like, in particular, and I believe Mr. Small spoke to you as well, um, the resident at 13, uh, 1317, 317, water. Don't worry, I'm not a mailman or anything. I'm most concerned about the line curve there and kids coming off of it, and I haven't actually seen a couple of, I've had a couple of instances of, 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 of. That's more the curve as it is to speed, and I think that the one-way, we just take care of that, and since we're not having complaints about speeding on Wallace, I think that's probably the good way to go. And, and thank you, that's great, okay. I have, I absolutely have, I've spoken to, uh, 343, 431, 317, 320, yeah.
What streets?
Uh, uh, water and toll.
And I will say, Mike, um, just because I know, who's a pro, part of your, that's my past, the, the lines, that I take it to first, Bobby, and, and, uh. Um, I would just like to say that there's going to be, uh, residents as well who have spoken to me that have a little bit of hesitancy about it, because they might live in that jungle vicinity, and now they're back tracking, you're going to have to wait multiple blocks to get to where they need to be to avoid going the wrong way in a one-way. I did, uh, agree with that resident, that they're definitely, um, I'm a proponent of implementing any sort of safety precautions that will help mitigate any sort of, you know, serious issues moving forward. But I just, I also spoke with Chief this past week as well, and there have, if any accidents were reported over there, fortunately, in Illinois, the majority of people were not driving, but maybe there's alternative routes, uh, of, of seeing that, as opposed to just making one-way to kind of offset some of the concerns as well, moving forward, just something to make. There's a lot to go into making that kind of decision, but I do know that there are, uh, present concerns with it as well.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I appreciate that very much, and, and my bias is never in favor of restricting the residents. Uh, in particular, one of the issues we're having is with kind of EVines going over there and kind of issues with that, her. But yeah, it's, and again, if, if I got sense, you know, we can't do anything without their blessing, then it's, again, I, I can start there, and, and thank you. Okay.
Yeah, my question, uh, I'll think about, will I, for the 2025 street servicing program, if the offer is advertised, that everything will be held on the sixth, 2025, at 16:00 p.m. at the city hall, too?
Do I have a second? Discussion on this? Per week rule?
Mr. Kaminsky?
Hi.
Mall?
Hi.
Shai?
Hi.
Buckingham?
Hi.
Mayor Hall?
Hi. You can, I'll, uh, uh, thank you.
Yeah, just one thing, but I, you came in, hope everybody got a copy of, I'd be, I'd be, uh, following Department of Public Health Water, that's not, on the way out. This one, the first, we recognize, and commend your community's water system for maintaining perfect compliance in 2024 for 12 consecutive months, according to the Public Works Supply Regulations Act. Great progress, yeah. Perfect. I wanted to grab a copy on the way out. Thank you, I should have brought a book, put it down. Sorry.
Um, so, number one?
Will I, Mayor Mall, I could, 2025, there's 12, a resolution playing, Bob, I'm gonna, 40, 40, 40.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Bob was gonna be, uh, replacing Jackie Hammond, he was, for the time of Florida, so. He didn't think it was fair to see L.C. get, so. No other discussion, or? I, Bob, Bob, can I ask, what makes you interested in doing it?
Well, like, I, I've been in this town for 15, 55 years, before I was born, I'm, um, and I just, I just feel like, you know, I've got a lot of time invested, 16 years on the school board, seven years at Little B, a lot of other voluntary things. Um, and I'd just like to, in my sunset years here, s- see what I can do to kind of make things better and make the town maybe more appealing to outsiders. Uh, we have, we have a lot of potential, and I'd like to see it come to fruition.
Hey, Bob? In a day, the present day, it's hard to get people to volunteer, so, that's wild, though.
Mr. Kaminsky?
Hi.
Mall?
Hi.
Shai?
Hi.
Buckingham?
Hi.
Mayor Hall?
Hi. I'll see who, Bob, here, please. No, here, you'll be fine, here, here, no, no, rookie.
Yeah, I can handle those other gats. Jimmy?
Uh, number two?
Will I, Mayor, on the resolution 25, verse 13, a resolution pointing to the East Vangelist to the Recreation Board, being adopted?
Well, I'm sorry. And he's gonna take the place of Brian Day, he's been on the, for, like, over, taking care of people and all that.
Very good, David.
He needs to take a year off.
Very good.
So he may be, have, run you?
Uh, no, Brian's under.
God, good to see you, Bob, you took, fine, done. Um.
That was a plan.
Per week rule? Uh, did he say question, please? Oh.
Huh?
Uh, same question, it's like, what makes you interested in, in, if you want?
I've been working for five, while they're on there.
Thank you.
Shai?
Per week rule?
Mr. Kaminsky?
Hi.
Mall?
Hi.
Shai?
Hi.
Buckingham?
Hi.
Mayor Hall?
Hi.
Really, you're?
The attorney.
Something there.
Okay, last thing I have is, how many people in there have a public voice offer? He stopped, for a corner, three days ago, and asked her if we had interviews, asked her if we had any options, and I figured I already knew the answer to that before I asked her. She said the city really doesn't have a whole lot of options, private, right? But, but, so we got doctors. But, but we got doctors.
Uh, she suggested that try and maybe put a little bit of pressure on, so talk a little bit. Hasty. Talking to, uh, State Stewart, political, talking to, uh, Jason Curran from O W B, and we all put a letter together that's going on in the public. It is tomorrow possibly, uh, have a good call at eight o'clock. But hopefully, they call and give us good news. Uh, if not, then the weather's going up and, uh, the commission for Shai, just, you know, and we probably get some doctors and put in and, uh, my people drop, 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 and we'll see the full, uh, on Facebook. They also jump somewhere to the zoom for the process of, as I found. So that, that's one of the other options as well.
Yeah, and, and, if, if I may, Eric, um, I certainly, a republic strike is bound to city's fault. But if we have a public health issue, we could do something to help that part of the equation. You know, and that's my interest in it, it's not a
Absolutely.
No, no, thoughts on that, though. Probably just got, wait, wait. Say, I don't really do it for that.
Let that, you still search it? I didn't get something under, but it's I could be, we, 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 okay.
I don't know, we should get some of the point you
Bye, bye. I need to provide a very drop-off on yourself. I don't know. Let's see, the tomorrow brings, anything?
Someone else? Is that what you're deciding?
Well, I, so, um, it's
Sir, can you learn?
But they're thinking, it's interesting, isn't it?
One more.
Per rule?
Hi.
Small?
Hi.
Ivan?
Hi.
Mayor Hall?
Hi.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm waiting on a conference call. Anyway, it's huh? Yeah, all I get is a friend from the FOIA that was sent to me. Like, why wouldn't that be sent to me? I'm, I'm very disturbed because it has nothing to do with the FOIA. Yeah, I see it's now. Say it out loud, please, guys.
I shouldn't do anything.
I like surprises.